Session on a five to zero vote, the committee voted to approve the superintendent's proposal for non-union raises. Secondly, on a three to two vote, the committee voted to approve the settlement of DeNoyan versus the city of Windsocket. Would you please stand and join me in a moment of silence in the pledge? I'd like all of us to keep in mind Mr. Al Chakad, who passed away this past week. For those of you who knew him, I believe he was here for 40 years as a teacher, as then as a principal, and then he went back to teaching. He's got a lot of beloved students and faculty and admin. He was a treasure for this community. So let's keep him in our thoughts. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the revolution of which it stands, the Constitution, and the God of universal liberty and justice Next, we'll go into good and welfare. If anyone wants to address the school committee, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and try to keep your comments to about three minutes.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Moylan. I live at 151 Elmore Avenue in Windsocket. I have two school-aged children. I'm deciding on whether or not I'm going to homeschool them this year, depending on what you guys decide. I did email Dr. McGee some questions so he could prepare for these. I don't know, is this a question and answer? Is he gonna, no? So how do we get the answers to these questions, then, if nobody's answering emails?
This is good and welfare.
Okay.
Good and welfare, you have your three minutes, and we listen to what you have to say.
All right, so if masks are mandated in this district because of the state mandate, how can you ensure that every single mask the child wears, like, how are they standardized? Are you gonna allow cloth masks, Batman, and whatever grandma sewed out of remnant fabric? Or are you gonna only allow surgical masks or fit-tested N95 masks? Because those are really the only things that prevent transmission, as documented in multiple studies. So that's what I'm concerned about. Will you be prepared to provide 504 plans for any students that can't wear a mask throughout the day? Will the district provide masks for students, like the N95 masks? Can you provide two masks per student per day so they can change into a fresh one after I'd also like for you to stop promoting the liability-free pharmaceutical product. Pfizer's already had $2.3 billion fraud settlement in 2009. The pharmaceutical product is a liability-free product, so if you're, if any child in this district is injured or harmed or killed, the family has one year to file a claim with the countermeasures injury compensation program. So how, like, what other, I don't know, contingency plans do you have in place, like, if a child does take it and gets hurt? What's their recourse with the district? I also have concerns about the binex testing. Are all the districts using the same exact lab standardized testing for the thresholds? Are all schools using the same standardized throughout our district? I don't know. Thank you so much for letting me talk.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to address the school committee? Again, please state your name and your address, please.
Ace around Glad Grove Street, Windsocket. I had a little thing here that I was gonna talk about, but obviously I know what your decision's gonna be on the mask issue, but I'll read it anyway. I have three grandchildren in the Windsocket school system, and I believe there is no reason to force our children to wear masks for a full school day. Most children wear cloth masks, and they will provide protection, and they will not provide protection for an entire day. The children will all be breathing the same recycled air. I know the Rhode Island Council of Elementary and Secondary Education has stated they will not accept any school reopening plan that does not require masks, but even their lawyer told them they didn't have that authority. Governor McKee has issued an executive order requiring schools to mask their students, claiming that Delta variant is a new disease. The General Assembly had previously ended his emergency orders with the passages, with the passage of Article III in the budget passed in June. And that's quoted from Rep. Charlene Lima, Democrat, representing Cranston in Providence, District 14, in an interview yesterday. They ended his mandate. Why should one person have such authority? This virus issue has been going on for over 18 months. Why is the governor still able to issue emergency orders, especially while bypassing the wishes of the General Assembly? I believe our children are best served with local officials making that decision. That's what you guys are here for. One school committee in the town of Gloucester on Monday voted to sue the elementary and secondary council. They also allow most exemptions. Requesting possibly sue the governor over his executive order. Three of you members up there tonight had previously been on record as leaning towards parental choice for masks. Child hospitalizations remain minimal and still no deaths under the age of 25. I implore you to stick with your plan on allowing parental choice and force the state to go on record by refusing your plan. Here in Rhode Island, please help us end the dictatorship of the governor and move us out of this chapter in history. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the school committee? Hearing none, we will go into recognitions and announcements. Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, school is going to be starting next week. The calendar for the 21-22 school year, I have shared with the community, with families. I will be sending out probably tomorrow a welcome-back letter to our families in the community as well, but I'm just gonna list a few important dates from the calendar. The first day of school, September 1st, is for students in grades 1 through 9 and kindergarten students whose last name begins with the letter A through L. And that's on Wednesday. On Thursday, September 2nd, it is the first day for students in grades 10 through 12 at Windsocket High School, and our kindergarten students with the last names beginning with the letters M through Z, that will be their first day. And on September 3rd, which is Friday, all students in grades K through 12 will be in together for the first time for the 21-22 school year. I am very excited about this new school year, you know, despite the last 18 months or so. I said this before, the Windsocket Education Department, even in light of a global pandemic, has been working very hard. That includes our teachers, our staff, our administrators, the school committee. We've all been working very hard for this, for this moment, really. And I am very, very excited at what we're going to be producing this year. We have a lot of great opportunities for our students and for our teachers and staff, and I'm just very excited to start a school year where we're going to see some sense of normalcy. Secondly, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, our back-to-school celebration was held on Saturday, August 14th, here at the middle school campus. I want to thank the St. James Baptist Church, as well as Thunder Mist, and the Windsocket Education Department. There were well over 1,000, I think, families that were in attendance there. We gave out backpacks, we gave out school supplies, we gave out food, there were free vaccines that were available to families as well. Normally, this celebration is held at St. James Baptist Church, and this year it was a drive-through, and the decision was made to have it here because of the, just the size of the campus. And I think that moving forward, we're going to continue to have our back-to-school celebration here at the Windsocket Middle School Campus. And again, I want to thank everyone that was there. It was a great event. It was nice to see families and students driving up, excited, looking forward, getting their school supplies, getting their backpacks. It was a great event, and again, I want to thank the St. James Baptist Church, as well as Thunder Mist. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have this evening.
I'd just like to piggyback on what you said on the back-to-school celebration. There were a lot of new faces that were in those cars, and they were all grateful. Parents, the grandparents, brothers, sisters, were all grateful for all the supplies that they received, the church volunteers, and our principals who were here, and directors who were here, and the superintendent and I were here. It was a lot of fun. It was great to spend time with these families, even though we got rained on a bit, and it was, it was a nice cooling shower, which we enjoyed, but it was, again, a great success. And I like having these giveaways and these celebrations held here, because it's so much easier to accommodate the over 1,000 that showed up. It felt like the Field of Dreams, that last scene you see in the movie where all the cars lined up. They were backed up all the way to Hamlet Bridge, and in our parking lot or the road leading in front of the school, there were four lines of cars by around 9 o'clock. So it was a great success, and it was a lot of fun. Anyone else have any comments? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll go into the approval minutes. First, I'll make a motion to approve the August 11, 2021 closed meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Missus? Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the August 11, 2021 open meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you. Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Missus?
In.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc? Yes.
Next, we'll go into the consent agenda, and I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Does any school committee member have, want to take anything out of the consent agenda to address individually? Hearing none, I'll make, Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Missus? Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, I'll turn it over to Ms. Morel for our special education model at Burnin' and Coleman.
Yes, we actually have a presentation for you, so if you wouldn't mind coming down and having a seat. So I know it is labeled as the special ed model change, but really, it's a change in the instructional model at both the buildings, at both Coleman and at Burnin' Heights. So I'm gonna turn it over to the principal at Coleman.
So our vision is to deliver a connected and cohesive model of instruction that meets the needs of every student. And we can do this with a commitment to ensuring that students have provided the support they need to access the general education curriculum. And our job is to provide the support so that all students have access to an educational experience that is in the least restrictive environment. And we can do this by shifting our aim, and you'll see this in a minute, by shifting the way we deliver our instruction to meet the needs of all of our students. So with that...
As Canadians, we have a reputation for finding and embracing the strength in our diversity. This value, however, hasn't been reflected in our classrooms, which still segregates students by ability, especially students with developmental disabilities. There's a gap in our understanding about what we know inclusive education to be philosophically versus what we understand and the importance of understanding inclusion in our practice. This is the question I'm trying to answer in my research, is how can we find the value in the day-to-day practice in our classrooms in terms of inclusive education? So how am I gonna explain this to you? Now, I could sit here and try and describe this, or we could have a little bit more fun. Why don't we go bowling? So let's talk about bowling. You have 10 pins, you have two balls, and you have a lane. The goal is to knock down as many pins as you can, but if you don't get them all, it's okay, because you have another chance. But when I bowl and roll the ball down the middle, and I don't knock them all down, what often ends up happening to me is that there's two pins left standing on either end, and they stare at you. It's the 7-10 split, and it's the hardest shot in bowling. How is bowling like teaching? The ball is the lesson, the pins are the kids. We aim for the middle, we do the best we can. The pins are left standing, we often have another chance to kind of get to them, but at the end of the day, those two pins that are staring, looking at you, are kids who need the most support, and are kids who need the most challenge. So we end up choosing one, and the other one is left standing. I just took all the fun out of bowling. Now, I don't know how many times you've watched professional bowling, but I spent an afternoon watching professional bowling, and let me tell you, there was not one bowler who rolled that ball down the middle of the lane. They throw the ball down the lane at a curve. And I was actually really curious about this, so I called up a professional bowler. He was so excited. I don't think he gets a lot of calls about education. He said the reason why the ball has to enter at a curve is because you will knock down more pins and create a bigger domino effect if you enter at that angle. But in order to do that, you have to change your aim. In order to knock down the most pins with one shot, he aims for the pins that are the hardest to hit. Now, let's just let this sink in for a second. We are taught to teach the headpins. We are not taught to teach the kids who are the furthest and the hardest to get to, the kids with autism, the kids with Down Syndrome. The part that's critical here, and it really aligns with universal design for learning, is that so often, the supports that we design for those kids on the outside of the lane are actually supports that all of the kids need. This is the part we need to understand if inclusive education is going to move forward in Canada. How can we find this value of diversity in our classrooms between the students? This is not just important for the outside pins, but it's critical for every single one of us. And just think, all we need to do is change our aim. Look how bowling changed education.
So this video really just, it's just a nice metaphor, is that we're not...
This is the checkers game where grandson and granddad...
We're not changing what we, what we teach, we're changing how we teach it, how we deliver the instruction. And so we're, Rob and I are gonna share the structures that we put in place to make that happen.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Rob DeRozio, I'm the principal at Burnin' Heights. The one thing that I really look forward to is seeing you in our buildings this year. And as you walk through our buildings, it will be, you know, you're not gonna see that intensive resource room, self-contained room. All our kids are just gonna be blended in, and it's gonna be really exciting, because you will not be able to tell who's who. It's gonna be awesome. It's gonna be really, really a nice way of doing this. But the one thing that the bowler was talking about is that there are, you need the resources and you need the supports. So at Burnin', we have the supports that are, we're gonna have six special educators, six resource teacher assistants, there's gonna be one assigned to each grade level, one grade level, they'll just focus on that one grade level. The resource teachers, their caseload would be about 31 students, three classrooms below 31, three classrooms to work in, so they don't, they're not gonna be spread all over the building. So when you're, when you come into our building, you'll be able to see, there'll be a lot of small group work being done, there'll be many teachers in the classroom, and that's something that we've always tried to do, but it's just was really difficult to get the, this model in place without the supports. We also have two social workers. That seems to be one of the things that people were worried about, like, are you gonna have the supports for the SLE-type stuff? And we do. We have three behavioral interventionists. We have a transition teachers, that's really exciting, in grades 1 and 2. And Burnin' Heights will begin the restorative practice training on Tuesday. So it's exciting for that, too, we'll be implementing that. And each classroom will be using the zones of regulation to help basically monitor the students' social, emotional levels, where they are at that particular moment. As they walk in the building after lunch, we can tell through the zones of regulations.
So at Coleman, similar to Burnin', we have expanded personnel, so three special educators with three teacher, resource TAs, and they're working in two classrooms. Coleman has also developed a master schedule to really maximize resource services and intervention supports. We've intentionally placed students receiving special ed services in the same classroom to allow for one resource teacher to work in only two classrooms to really maximize the support and the services. And then, and also, kind of relating to the master schedule, is it, it's a mirrored schedule, meaning that each grade level teaches the same, the two classrooms at each grade level at Coleman will teach the same core content at the same time. In the event that a student might, would be eligible for special education services, they'll be able to receive that service from the special education teacher. Considerations for classroom space and design. Coleman is able to get new furniture, new desks, and we're, we've allotted for horseshoe tables, which provides small, facilitates small group work. And we've, we've purchased two per classroom, so really opening up the classroom space and making room for small group work to happen in the classroom. The accelerated learning community, so that's new this year at the elementary level, but it's a 60-minute block one day a week for collaboration between special education teachers, classroom teachers, interventionists, to really work together to provide that cohesive So both Coleman and Burnin' are comprehension, comprehensive school improvement plan schools, which means that we have resources at our hands. And so really using those financial resources to, to purchase interventions and materials so that students have what they need. And one, one piece that's new this year is a Tier One literacy intervention, which is materials and books, a level, it's a leveled system, and so all classrooms are getting it, but it meets the needs of everybody. And so all kids, all students, will have just books that are at their level, which, which is a, you know, a big piece for the inclusive, the inclusive model. And then, I think the big piece of this is ownership of all students every day. So everybody is accountable, everybody is responsible for meeting the needs of all of our students. And ultimately, at Coleman, we've, we've really built structures and, and worked to allocate the resources that we have to open our doors and work collaboratively together to meet the needs of all of our students. So it's all hands on deck to meet the needs of our kids every day. So I've been working collaboratively with both Abby and Rob to make sure that we're giving the supports needed for all the students at both Coleman and Burnin' Heights, and that we're removing the barriers so that we're there, the students get what they need and get what they require. So the resource teachers that are in both the buildings were teachers that we already have. There were no extra funds that were needed for that part of it, because I was able to, we had a bubble year, to go a little bit in depth with this. A lot of our fifth-grade students that were in our self-contained classrooms moved up to the middle school, so it left a lot of openings in our intermediate self-contained classrooms and our primary self-contained classrooms. So when I was able to shut down those classrooms, and if students remained in those classes, that type of setting, I was able to move them to different parts of different schools, and those teachers were flipped into resource teachers, and the TAs in those classrooms were flipped to resource TAs. So they didn't have to be displaced or let go or anything like that. We were able to keep our community together in the, in the buildings. So, right now, we're starting with these two schools, because they were the CSNI, CSNI schools, I think I said the acronym right. We started with those two first. We're going to work out the kinks as the year goes on, make sure we perfect this, and then roll out to two more schools and keep doing it throughout the year. I won't be able to shut, and I'm not shutting down all self-contained classrooms, because we will need some of them. Some students require that type of support. So we will still have that type of support for our students, but we are trying to move more in an inclusive way. You're welcome.
So the other thing that, we had a small snapshot of it this summer, and we had some people in the building, the commissioner had come down, and as we were touring the building, I had said to Dr. Holt, I said, "Do you know there were two special, two IEP kids in that class?" And she said, "There were?" "You could not tell." "They were engaged in the learning, they were part of the class." I was really excited.
And essentially, that's, that's how it should be. You should not be able to, to pick out students. You should not be able to, to pick out students. Yes, Mr. Park? So yes, but we're, it's inclusion model. Yep. So no, we've always had, we've always had students with resource IEPs. It's just some of the students that needed a great, more support or more service hours sometimes were put into a smaller classroom to get all the supports that were needed. At these two, two schools, we were able to add those supports. So in perspective, Mr. DeRogier last year had three resource teachers in his building for the sixth grade. So one resource teacher would be teaching, would be a support for grades K, one, two, and maybe grade four because that's what was on her caseload. And she could have up to 25 to 31 students on her caseload. So that one resource teacher was pulled in multiple directions. What we were able to do here is now we have one resource teacher for each of the grade levels so that one resource teacher is going into three of the classrooms and her caseload went from 31 down to maybe 15, maybe 11. And she's able, he or she is able to be laser focused on just those students and that grade level. So she's not learning, you know, Eureka's fifth grade and fourth grade and first grade to be able to help those students. They're just learning that grade level and supporting those students in those classrooms. So, and we also have the paraprofessional that's able to go in and help do the small group work. So if I'm going into room one, she could go into room two and help support and we can flip flop. So we were at, able to add more support to these classrooms to help the students and all the students that are in the classrooms. Yes. So it's, it's not new. We've always had resource teachers going into the classrooms. It's just we were able to add extra support to be able to move forward. The least restrictive environment, absolutely. Any other questions? Yes, Dr. McGee? Thank you.
Thank you for that. That seems very interesting and can't wait to go to both schools to see how the program is, is working this year. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the special education model at Vernon and Coleman Elementary Schools report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Dr. McGee, your report please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I'm going to start with personnel matters, excuse me, as I usually do. So as we're getting really close to the start of the school year, as I stated earlier, first day is next Wednesday. This past week, we, we had our new hire meeting and, and new hire orientation, I should say. We had over 50 new hires that were present and that, that went really well. I want to commend Dr. Holt and Ms. Dargan and many others who worked very hard at putting that orientation together. The, the new staff were very excited about coming to One Socket and they received a lot of really invaluable information and they also received some, some goodies in, in the form of Chromebooks and other types of things. So I want to thank them. It was a very successful day. We still have a good number of positions that we are looking to fill. We've got about 20 or so more to fill. And I know that our administrators and, and other staff are busy at work, you know, trying to fill as many of those positions as we can for the start of the school year, but they have been working very hard. My second agenda item is the administrative retreat. As, as you may be aware, each year we have an administrator's retreat. This year we had it here at Hamlet Middle School and it was very successful. It went from nine in the morning till three in the afternoon. We went over, that the, the retreat included all of our principals, all of our assistant principals and directors. And what we did is we continued the work that we started this past year with the Teaching and Learning Alliance. And that was around learning walks. So what we did is we looked at all of the data that we collected last year from our learning walks. When I say learning walk, I mean a group of, of administrators and other staff would go into, into classrooms and, you know, observe, looking for specific types of pieces of instruction and then sort of coming back and debriefing. And so we did that last year and what we did on, on Tuesday was we, we really further analyzed that data so that we kind of have a baseline moving into this year as to what our expectations for teachers and staff will be around teaching and learning. So again, it was, it was a great day and, you know, good work, looked at a lot of data. The last agenda item is our summer PD Academy. That is again, that, that is an annual thing here in One Socket. Typically we, we run the, the summer professional development academy in the beginning of the summer, just right after we get out of school. This year we chose to, to run it in, in August and that is for our teachers and staff. We also provide, I think, opportunities for our paraprofessionals. And that was running this week. It began on the 24th and it goes through the 27th. The PD opportunities were presented both virtually in some cases and in person in many others. And the focus really of our professional development each year is to improve instructional practices across the district. So I'm very pleased to, to announce that, that gone very well is going well. And again, I want to thank Dr. Holt as, as our Director of Curriculum and Development, and development really is professional development. So it's, it's been a great opportunity. Just hearing back from people anecdotally, the PD opportunities were, were really well received and it's a good way to move into the school year for our teachers and staff. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Any school committee member have any comments or questions for the superintendent? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor?
Aye.
We had once a school subcommittee report since our last meeting. It was the facilities subcommittee that met. Mr. Leclair and I attended that and I'll ask our Director of Operations to take us through the agenda on a summary basis.
Thank you, Chairman. So we did meet in fact, and the first item that we talked about was ADA compliance in the district and provided a brief update as to what we were doing, which was discussed at the full committee agenda at the last meeting. We talked about facilities projects such as the control pumps at the high school, the Thunder Mist project at One Socket High School in terms of renovations for the opening of school, playground repairs, particular at Postier Elementary School. We talked about the handicap ramp at the Career Technical Center, the Coleman fencing, and then the access control key fob system that we've been converting over to. In addition to facilities projects, we discussed the three new transpro vans that we were purchasing. We provided a five-year capital plan update and where we are with, with that programming. We briefly discussed the McPhee administration building parking lot and, and where we were going with that in terms of reaching out to the owner of the property. We discussed that the bus routes which were released this week from Durham for the upcoming school year would be forthcoming at the time. The trust safety committee update was, well, there was no update because the trust safety committee was, was canceled. That is, that's the overview of what the subcommittee discussed. Thank you, Chairman.
Very much. Any questions from Mr. Notariani?
I have one, Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Kepiscus, please.
I don't know if I'm in appropriate time to ask it, but I've been asked by some staff members about the filtration systems and the maintenance that's been done on them. I'm presuming whatever maintenance is required with regard to facilities is being done as required for, for COVID protection. That's what the concern is. Could you just confirm that for people who are questioning?
Yes, we're following the manufacturer's recommended guidelines for maintaining the HEPA filter units that were placed in the classrooms or the measurements that we took for air changes per hour during reopening of school last year. So we are following what the guidelines and guidance are from both the manufacturers to adhere to the guidelines from the CDC about air changes per hour.
Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the facilities subcommittee update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor?
Aye.
Next we'll go into new business and the first item is the discussion and approval on approval on the back to school plans. Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee. So I am going to present to you this evening a recommendation plan around our back to school plans for the One Socket Education Department. I'm going to be breaking this down into three categories. The first category is health and safety. The second category is instruction and the third category is social, emotional and mental health support. As the committee is, is aware, this plan is due to the Department of Education by the end of this week. So, you know, at the end of this meeting, if you approve my, our, our plan, then we will submit this to the Department of Education. Let me first start with health and safety. So health and safety includes our mitigation strategies and those strategies are broken down into starting with masking. So based on the governor, on Governor McKee's executive order, my recommendation is that we implement universal masking in the One Socket Education Department in grades pre-K through 12 for all students and all staff. More so, moreover, any, any student who would refuse to wear a mask that will be mandated will be sent home and will be suspended. And we will follow the process of, of the disciplinary laws with respect to that. We are serious about wearing masks here. That is what the governor has, has ordered and as the superintendent, I believe it is, it is, it is my duty to enforce or to recommend what the governor has, has enforced, is enforcing across the state. I will say that masking is universal, however, there are, there may be instances for religious and/or medical reasons where students would become, would be exempt. And if that were the case, that the parent would need to reach out to the building principal and nurse and the proper process would need to be followed to establish whether or not the, that exemption was, is necessary or not. The second part of health and safety is symptom screening. We are, we are choosing to have the, the screening being some, as simple as if a student or staff member is sick or they have any of the, of the symptoms, that they are to stay home. That's not changing from our existing plan. And then the second part to this is that there would be no daily home screening. So there would not be that form that normally is, has been completed or that the family would, would normally have to sort of review at home. That really wasn't provided to the schools to begin with. So there's really no change there other than if you're sick, you have any of the symptoms, then you need to stay home. Physical distancing, where at the secondary level, it's not required. So we're not requiring the physical distancing at the secondary level, that being grades six through 12. At the elementary level, our physical distancing is from zero to three feet. So in instances where we can separate by three feet, we will. If we cannot, because students and staff will be masked, it will be permitted that they are closer than three feet. Testing, we are recommending that we only provide symptomatic testing to students and that symptomatic testing would be an opt-in parental consent. So it would not be a situation where if a student's parent did not opt for them to be tested, they could not be tested. So we have created a district form already. Our, our school nurse, teacher coordinator has created that form and that would be something that would be sent to all families. And if the family decides to opt in, they would send it back to us and we would know who would be able to be tested using the binax. That would happen in the, in the nurse's office. That process would, so, so should a student opt in and they're tested and it's negative, then there is a second test, a PCR test, and we're going to be reaching out with, to Thunder Mist to see if Thunder Mist would partner with us so that the family would then utilize Thunder Mist for the PCR test if the first one is negative. And if the second one is negative, hopefully it is, then there would not be a problem. With respect to quarantining, we're following the, the guidance of seven days with the test. So the student or staff would return on the eighth day and that's if they're tested by the fifth day where previously we had 14 days. That has changed. The CDC has changed that, those guidelines over the last year. So we would be utilizing the, the seven days, returning, as I said, on the eighth day with a negative, with two negative tests. Cleaning, disinfection and hand hygiene, we will continue to adhere to the CDC guidance with respect to that. And Mr. Notariani and his, his team has done a very fine job over the last year and a half of ensuring that our, our buildings are properly disinfected, cleaned, and that we are utilizing the appropriate hygiene guidance. Ventilation, we're going to attack that in a variety of ways. That really isn't changing. I know, I think Mrs. Kepiscus mentioned it a few moments ago and, and I'll echo what Mr. Notariani said. So we're going to, we're going to keep windows open when we can. That's something that we've been doing up until this point. We have our, our air changes per hour, which we, in the beginning of the, of the pandemic, when we started to purchase the purifiers, the air filters, the HEPA filters, we checked each of our rooms to make sure that there was an, an air change of four to six per hour. We're going to, we're continuing to do that. Any rooms that did not have the air exchange between four to six were the ones that we purchased the HEPA filters and the air filters and put those in, in those classrooms and to our offices. We're going to continue to do that. The filters are changed through the manufacturer's guidelines every six to 12 months. So I've had some meetings with Mr. Notariani and the facilities department and the odious department. They are, are working on that to make sure that those filters are changed properly as, as indicated through the manufacturer guidelines. So I'm going to stop there after the, after this first category for any questions. There are two more categories that I'm going to be discussing, so I don't want to give you everything at once. It might be best to sort of chunk it a little bit. So if anyone has any questions with respect to health and safety, I would be happy to answer them.
I've just got comments and maybe other members of the committee have comments as well. Prior to the mandate, the governor's mandate, there was no, people know me, I was looking for parental control over mask wearing. That's the key. All the other things that we've talked about in terms of, of safety is pretty much all those procedures have been in place for the last 18 months. With the governor's mandate, as well as the task force meeting that we had recently, the focus is on community safety, community health. And frankly, listening to the governor, whatever, taking the politics away from this, when you take a look at the, the three main deterrents to this disease, it's vaccines, it's ventilation and masking. Now, many folks have argued masking. The focus has been on masking. I can't tell you how many calls I've gotten that are anti-mask. I can't tell you how many calls I've gotten that are anti-maskers, and I've got a whole bunch of others who are maskers. This is, I've had comments in person, I've had emails, I've had texts, phone numbers, people banging on my door. And wherever I go, it's the question. Paul, we need to have masks. Paul, we shouldn't have masks. So it's been a question, but frankly, when you focus on the top two, vaccines and ventilation, we've got ventilation down. We've done a great job, but this city has done a very poor job. We have very few vaccines. I think adults are in the mid to high 40s, and our 12 to 18-year-old population, they're around 20%. That does not really bode well for parental control. Folks who are upset that we are going to wear masking, wear masks. I think you should look to the folks who don't want to, don't want to get vaccines. Some may have real good reasons, but there are a lot of people that just don't want to do it. That's really the focus. The more vaccines we get in our community, the sooner, and in Rhode Island, the sooner I believe, I believe that the governor is going to relax his mandate, because although his, his order ends on the 18th of September, he can renew this. And I'll bet you he's going to keep renewing, renewing it as long as vaccinations are low. The other thing I was thinking about is, what's different this year than last year? In last year, last summer, we had, we had, around March, we had the same prob, we had similar problems. We had people who were telling us, we got to get our kids to school, or I want to keep my kids at home. My kids need social and emotional support. So what did our district do? We worked our heads off, backsides off, the entire administration, teaching staff, union members, everyone, school committee, to try to get our kids back to school. We started with virtual programs that had to be developed. Then we went to a hybrid model, and people complained all along this. And finally, when are you going to get all our kids back to school? But we finally did it. They finally did it. And this summer, we have spent a lot of money, time, effort, and brought people in to take care of learning loss, to take care of emotional support. Now, the focus is on masking. I would think the focus should be primarily on the gains we've made over the last year, is we're bringing our kids fully in school. They will be here. They will be able to be with their classmates. And when we've gone through classrooms this year, and even as recent when the, when the commissioner came, I didn't see any kid, any of the kids upset at wearing masks. I've, I've talked to other students that are in our system and around town. Masking has not been the general problem. The problem is, we've got to be in school because that's where I learn the best. I've got to be with my classmates. I can't do this at home, locked up alone. So when I look at what we had last year and what we've gained, I don't want to lose that. And so I encourage parents to bring your, let your kids come to school, let them wear the masks. And this way, they will be in school, they will get the benefit of our programs, which always keep getting better, they will be with their classmates. So I really endorse your recommendation, Dr. McGee, in terms of masking and what we're doing for health and safety. So those are my thoughts on health and safety. Does anyone else want to address that?
Yeah.
Mrs. Costa, please.
So, I also agreed with not having to, like, to have it as a parent's choice, as far as children, you know, wearing masks. I also, I am very big on that. It should be a parent's choice. Yes, I understand that Governor McKee, he did make the mask mandate, and I am also one of the adults that am not vaccinated, because personally, I don't really see where it prevents this disease. I've known about seven people that have been vaccinated and then ended up with COVID. So where does it really help? It just helps because you can still get the symptoms and pass it on. So I'm not ready to get the vaccine until it's proven that it really prevents from getting it. And that's, that's where I stand on that, and I still am very much pro-choice for parents.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chair Burke?
I just want to say thank you to Dr. McGee for the details of his plan. As school committee members, our main mandate is to enhance the education and the safety of all our children, and I thank you for the details that you have provided us tonight. And I think we were able to have a safe return to school this year. And, and hopefully, we can stop talking about the politics, and let's start talking about education. And so, thank you, Dr. McGee.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee, why don't you go to?
Part two. Part two, I'll briefly discuss instruction. That was, of course, part of the back-to-school plan. It's an important part of the plan. As I've said before, the Wensocket Education Department will not be offering any virtual classes at all. However, if and when, and we know that it more than likely will happen, when students are quarantined at the secondary level, our teachers will provide access to work to their students who may be quarantined through the use of Google Classroom. Now, this is something that they've been using for a year and a half, and in some instances, some, some teachers have been using it longer than, than the pandemic has been here. So we will continue to utilize our Google Classroom at, at the secondary level for our, our students. If there's a situation where the teacher is quarantined, and that certainly may well happen as well, so if there, if the teacher's quarantined, and there are a certain number of students in the classroom that are quarantined, then the teacher will be working with those students virtually on their Chromebook, while the students that are in the class that may not have to quarantine, because we did see that last year. There were some instances in classes where, where based on, you know, the, the social distancing and the contact, close contact, there were some students that did not have to quarantine. Those, we would be getting a substitute like we did last year for that classroom for the students that are there in person. At the elementary level, we will do something similarly, and that is the slide decks. So teachers and Dr. Holt and, and Mrs. DiRiso are going to be putting together some information to share with all of the teachers and staff in the district very soon with respect to what the expectations are when either they're quarantined or their students are quarantined. But at the elementary level, they would be utilizing slide decks. Now, they use slide decks for the last year and a half, and the difference is, is that they, they've used slide decks every single day, every, every week. In this instance, they, the teachers at the elementary level would be required to create a slide deck for one lesson a week. So they would be sharing their lesson with their students through that slide deck. But again, more information will be coming forward from Dr. Holt's department. So if there are students who, whose, whose families are refusing to send them to school in person, then the, the option that they have is to homeschool. So there are really two options: coming in person, wearing a mask, or homeschooling. And that process is, is on our website. Any, any families that would elect to do that can certainly reach out to Dr. Holt's office, as Dr. Holt is responsible for our, our homeschooling department here in the Wed. So they would reach out to, to her office. The last category is social, emotional, and mental health support, and that really isn't changing at all from what we've been doing since the start of the pandemic, and really what we, what we were doing prior to that. Because prior to the pandemic, we were starting to train staff in areas of social, emotional learning. We were starting to train staff in areas of restorative practices, trauma-informed schooling. So basically, training staff as to, as to how to recognize students who may be experiencing trauma, and, and how to best support them, whether it's through the teacher themselves or social worker or the, or the psychologist. So we're going to continue doing that, working closely with our community partners, Community Care Alliance, as well as Thunder Mist. I will be sharing this information later tomorrow with families. I will sort of break it down, much like I broke it down this evening, so parents and families are aware of what's, what the expectations are. And of course, you know, once the, once the committee either approves the, the plan or, or, you know, asks me to make modifications to some parts of the plan. And with that, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's not really a lot. I, I've, I've said this many times, this reopening plan was much smaller than last year's reopening plan. You know, a lot of these things we have been doing, so it is going to be a little easier for us the second time around. But again, I think that, you know, we're, we're getting closer and closer to normalcy with, with a few exceptions. But again, my, my job as a superintendent is to make sure that all of our students and staff are safe. I've said it all along, and the governor has, you know, mandated that, that schools wear masks, students and staff wear masks, and I am going to go along with that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, school committee.
Dr. McGee, thank you for, for your, for this plan, and I, I also want to thank Vice Chair Burke for his comments with regards and all our, and, you know, Mrs. Costa's comments. I mean, we are all different people, but I think the plan is set to make sure our kids get the best education in a very safe environment. I think that's, that's really the key. Now, mask-wearing is not just, it also includes visitors, doesn't it?
It does.
Okay. I want to make sure we say that.
Yes, it includes visitors.
Anyone walking into a school building has to be masked.
Mr. Chair, I, I also have one other question, too. If, if we do have to, obviously, we have to, because Governor McKee said. However, is there a way that maybe we can make sure that maybe we're supplying clean masks for our children, because that was one of the issues that the parents had? So is there a way that maybe we can put into that where we can supply children with clean masks?
It, it is. It actually is, is in the, the part of the, the plan that talks about your cleaning, disinfecting, and, and the hygiene.
Okay.
So we will. That's something that we have been doing, and we're going to continue to, to provide masks at each of our schools for staff and for students if they need them.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Costa, well, what's interesting is some parents and, and their children refuse to put on a new mask because they wanted to wear the ones they got from home, and that's what the parents expected. So the new, the clean masks are going to be made available, and hopefully they will use them. Yep. Any other comments? Dr. McGee, roll call to approve your reopening plan.
Chairman Borje?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the restructuring of the Wensocket High School administration. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I believe that the committee has in their, on their Chromebook, the link to the Wensocket High School administrative organizational chart, which includes on the first, on the first page, the, the actual sort of flow chart of what the proposal will be. And following that, it, it has the job description, or the roles and responsibilities, I should say, of each of those administrative positions. And if you go to the, the second to last page, where it lists, there's, there's an actual assistant principal, it's a 10-month position, I'll talk about that in, in a few moments, and then at the back, there is an actual fiscal outline of fiscal impact of what this will be. So, so having said that, everybody has it, I'm assuming.
I think so, everyone?
So.
Hold on a second.
Okay.
Or, uh, Miss Costa has it.
Somewhere, it's just not where it should be.
Okay. Great.
So let me start with the flow chart. So as the committee is aware, at the high school, we are starting this year with a ninth grade or a freshman academy. And just to give you a little information about the freshman academy, the purpose of a freshman academy is to provide more supports, more personalization to our ninth graders, because they're coming from a middle school where they were with really the same group of students, the same group of teachers, and then they go to the high school, which is, you know, it's a large, comprehensive high school. It's, you know, one of the largest in the state. The, the transition can be challenging for some students. And one of the things that we've noticed over the years is that that's when we lose students, whether it's through, you know, failing classes, especially our Algebra I classes, that those Algebra I classes historically has a very high failure rate. So the goal moving forward in working with Mr. Guo and his administrative team is to ensure that our freshmen have the support that they might receive, that they were receiving at the middle school. So we're doing that. As a result, what I'm asking the school committee is that we make an additional administrative position to the high school, and that would be a 10-month assistant principal who would be responsible for overseeing the freshman academy. So this person would oversee the students, would be building relationships with those students, and would also be working very closely with the teachers of the freshman academy, which there would be about four teams, so you're talking about approximately 16 teachers. So this administrator would be really working very closely with them during their common planning, would be assisting them in, in, in providing that personalization for the students in the ninth grade. In addition to, as I said, building and establishing relationships with just the freshmen. So let me take you through, through this. That, that's, that's the, that's the fiscal ask, is, is that, is, is the, is the 10-month assistant principal. So if you look at the, the chart here, we have at the top, we have the principal, and then if you go directly below the principal, you have the director of the career center, who is Mr. Webb. If you go to the, all the way to the, to the left, assistant principal of academic affairs, that's really a position that we currently have at the high school. That person is primarily responsible for the guidance department. If you move, again, back to the center, where we have the box where the director of the career center is listed, if you move to the, to the right of that, the assistant principal of student affairs and culture, we have that position there as, as well. So we currently have those two assistant principal positions, and they're 12-month positions. So the, the ask is that we add, if you, if you move to the right of that, the assistant principal for the ninth grade academy, that would be a position that we'd be looking for. In addition to that, we've been having some conversations, Mrs. Morell, myself, Mr. Guo, Dr. Sullivan, when she was here. And one of the things that we've felt has, has been lacking at the high school is really the, that special education administrative presence at the school. We, we currently have a coordinator at the high school, a special education coordinator, and she does a tremendous job. But my belief is that we need to put special education at the forefront across the district, but especially at the high school. And my request of the committee is that we would take that, the current position, which is not an administrative position, it's a quasi-administrative position, the coordinator of special education at the high school, and make that person, or make that position a 10-month assistant principal of student support services, which would be special education. So that does, it does two things, as I said. Number one, it, it brings the special education department more, it, it has more, it'll have more of a presence at the high school. And the second part to that is that we have programs at the high school currently where, in, in the special education department, where we are trying to, you know, as we discussed a little while ago here, trying to increase the inclusion at the, at the high school. This position and this person, I think, will have a very strong effect on the, really the, the improvement in the moving forward of the special education department at the high school. So that, that is... So that, that is, uh, tho, those are the, those are my two requests. If you, let me stop there, and I'm going to see if anybody has any questions before we talk about, uh, before I discuss the fiscal impact with the committee.
Let me just get this straight. The, the assistant principal for the academy, is that person, do we have that person right now?
We do not.
Isn't that kind of critical since we're starting the year and we're weak?
We do, yes.
Somebody going to be slotted into that at least until you find a permanent? I see Mr. Guio.
You have somebody in mind.
Would you want to address that for us? Because I think that's a great idea to have this academy. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
We have one que, Ms. Costa?
I was just going to ask if there was somebody that, because obviously you created this position. Is there somebody in mind with this position that you created?
Will they be, Mr. Guio, will they be able to fully give a lot of attention to the academy, since we're saying this is critical? Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
May I make a comment?
Yes.
Um, I just want to say, thank you, Mr. Guio, for actually stepping in when we needed you, uh, when there was absence and we needed somebody to step in. You didn't hesitate and you took the action, and I also just want to say congratulations on your new position.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Dr. McGee.
So if you go to the last page, I say page because I'm still using hard copies here, but if, if it's the, if it's the bot, the bottom of, of your folder there, um, you will see, uh, fiscal impact chart. So if you go to the, uh, the column that lists current position, that is the chairperson of Student Services at the high school, and then if you, if you go over to the current salary, so that person currently is, is, that person's current salary is $86,588. Uh, the new salary, because that, this person would then be promoted really to, to the title of assistant principal for Student Services, and we would align that assistant principal with the other 10-month assistant principal salaries, which would, uh, bring that to $88,330, which is an increase of $1,742. When you throw the benefits in of $403, it's a total fiscal impact of $2,145 for that position. Again, because the, the person that would, would fill, would fill that position is currently receiving a salary for the chairperson position. And then the second, the, the position that we would be looking to add, the assistant principal for the ninth grade, um, again, would be $88,330. That would be the, that's the, the, the base, the in, the, the base salary, the benefits would be $40,594, for a total of $128,924. If you combine the two, the $128,924 with the, the increase of the $2145, the total fiscal impact would be $131,069.
Mr. Perrier, had we contemplated any of these numbers in our budget? Or are these brand new?
Should I follow your question there, Mr. Chairman?
It's an ad of a, of a, of a, of a position, but we may have had, is the money coming out of our operating budget, but it, it, the thing is, it could have been budgeted.
Uh, no, this, this was not budgeted. This is, this is a brand new position that was not budgeted, correct?
Any comments, questions? Kevin? Vice Chair Burke?
Uh, Dr. McGee, um, assistant principal needs state certification, correct?
Yeah.
Did that chairperson of Student Services also require some sort of state certification?
So for, for her current position, she's certified, and she's also a certified administrator as well, so she could.
It does cover.
So it, it does cover this, uh, this proposed new position, yes.
Any other questions? Kapiskas.
On that same assistant principal position, I'm just looking at the numbers, and, um, there's two different numbers listed on the, what we discussed in closed session, and what's here. I just want to make sure someone's aware of that.
This may not include the raise.
Okay.
Can I, yeah. This was, this was prepared before we finalized what we talked about in closed session.
Okay.
Just, just, just so you know, and the committee knows, uh, those numbers will be adjusted to what was discussed in closed session so that we're equitable across the board.
Anyone else?
Good catch, Ms. Kapiskas.
I hate accounting. Always catching those kinds of things, I tell you.
Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a, a motion to discuss and approve revisions to the building, uh, 22-03 athletic supplies bid, I guess that's a bid, um, not building, but bid. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Costa, Dr. McGee, oh, or Mr. Perrier.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, in front of the School Committee this evening is an adjustment to a bid that the committee approved a couple of school committees ago. Uh, the dollars are very small, it's only a reduction of $546, but due to the fact that bids are often requested through public records requests, and, and they're pretty highly visible, I just wanted to make sure to bring this back to the committee so that everybody was on the same page. Just, just so you know, an adjustment like this, normally I would just make, uh, and, and not trouble the School Committee with it, but because of the factors that I discussed before, I just wanted to quickly update the School Committee as to the adjustments we made to this bid. So, um, there, there was a few adjustments here, uh, there was two, two lines that were calculated incorrectly, so we wanted to award that to the lowest bidder. Uh, we had two, we had, we had two lines that were, uh, there was a vendor error where the vendor bid on something and didn't realize it was marked for a dozen and not for one single item, so they weren't able to have, they weren't, didn't have the lowest price in that situation, so the bid was adjusted there. And then finally, at the end, uh, there were some availability issues for some uniforms. Uh, we wanted to make sure that when we have this bid, that if we need replacement uniforms, that we get them at the same price that the bid originally was. Um, we had a vendor that we've ran into issues with historically, where that wasn't the case, where a bid was awarded, if something was needed down the road, there was an increased price through additional, there was additional costs, uh, associated with reproducing that, uh, uniform. Uh, I've been assured that that will not be a problem this time, and that is why that email was attached, uh, to follow up. So we've adjusted the bid as well to go with the lowest bidder for those uniforms as well. Again, we're, we're looking at a $546 change to the bid, very, very small dollars, but again, I just wanted to keep the School Committee informed as to what we were doing with this bid.
Any questions or comments? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Last item on our agenda is a discussion on the epidemiology laboratory capacity, ELC grant. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the ELC grant is a grant that is provided to districts in Rhode Island as a result of COVID-19, specifically as we move into this school year, and it's specific to, um, vaccinating and testing, um, COVID testing. So the, the grant actually does not have a, a number to it. We, we can just apply to the, for this grant, and it, again, it's through the state. Um, we have completed that process, we've put together, uh, a list of, of what we would like to receive, um, which includes the, uh, the Binax kits, which we're going to need this year. Uh, each of our school will need those, those kits to, to test students and, and to staff potentially. Um, we're also looking at a mobile health hut for testing, so we would be potentially purchasing a vehicle where we could go around the city with our, um, medical professionals and actually go to the student or the family to provide the vaccination versus having them have to go to a location where, you know, it might be difficult for them to, if they don't have access to a vehicle or to transportation. Um, in addition to that, we're going to be providing, uh, one, the funding will provide stipends for our nurses to assist with the contact tracing. Contact tracing takes a lot of time, it's not just done during the, the school day. In fact, it's really oftentimes conducted before school or after school hours in the evening, so we would use, utilize that money for stipends for our, our nurses to assist in that. Uh, also purchasing extra PPE equipment. Um, Mrs. Costa, I know you, you mentioned that earlier, um, you know, with respect to masks, and so we would be able to purchase, um, much more PPE equipment with this, with this grant. Um, and also, we could all, we could utilize the money in a, in a partnership with Thundermist as well moving forward, whether it's through, uh, uh, them assisting us with the testing or assisting us with the vaccinations. And we also can use, utilize the money for extra TIPPA filters, TIPPA filters. Say that five times fast. So that, that's, that's, that is really the, the, um, the grant in and of itself. Um, again, it's, every district really in the state is, is applying. It, it's not a competitive grant, I think it's, it's just a, a situation where you submit the, the proposal, you know, that you submit the grant, and you, you know, you ultimately will, will receive, hopefully, everything that you're asking for. We may not get everything, uh, we may not get a vehicle, but, you know, we certainly, I think there are certainly items on this list that we will definitely receive.
Have we identified a dollar amount that we're asking for at this point? Mr. Perrier?
At this point, Mr. Chairman, there is no, uh, amount on the bid, so we, we don't have an award we're shooting for. Uh, we're just looking to ask for all the items that we think can fit into this grant and kind of figure it going forward from there.
Yeah, any, any comments?
I have a question. I, I was a part of a focus group for school committees on COVID with Department of Health, and they were talking about a grant that was going to be available that would include a position called a COVID coordinator. Is this all part of that same grant, if you know?
They're, they're, they're nodding, so yes, it is.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're going to go with the crowd.
Yes, I'm, I'm going to go with those three. Yes.
Anyone else? Thank you, Dr. McGee. Uh, there was no, no need for a, a motion or, or vote, it was just a discussion. Um, having nothing else on our agenda, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:23. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Great job.[1319.78]
At this point, Mr. Chairman, there is no amount on the bid, so we, we don't have an award we're shooting for. We're just looking to ask for all the items that we think can fit into this grant and kind of figure it going forward from there.
Guio, any, any comments?
I have a question. I, I was a part of a focus group for school committees on COVID with Department of Health, and they were talking about a grant that was going to be available that would include a position called a COVID Coordinator. Is this all part of that same grant, if you know?
They're, they're, they're nodding, so yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
We're going to go with the crowd.
Yes, I'm, I'm going to go with those three. Yes.
Anyone else? Thank you, Dr. McGee. There was no, no need for a, a motion or, or a vote. It was just a discussion. Having nothing else on our agenda, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:23. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas. Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Everyone, great job.